The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of Weyburn City Council held in the council chambers at 6:00 PM Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. This will be one of the -- this will be the last regular council meeting to be held for this council. More about that later on tonight. First thing that on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held September 23rd, 2024. Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I move the minutes of the regular council meeting and SP&amp;P meeting for September 23rd, 2024 be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Called question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. We have a full council here tonight. That is to be noted. Additions to the agenda, we have A to 2A is October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. We will have that. And then Larry, you want another?
Yes, your worship, I guess it would be 10B. I would like to add a Stormwater Replacement Investigation to the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Warren, anything?
I know, your worship, no additions from administration tonight.
Council members? Nothing? All in favor?
Your worship, I'll make that motion first real quick if that's all right. So I'll make the motion that the following additions be added to the agenda for tonight's meeting. 4A, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation, and 10B, the 16th Street Storm Main Replacement Project Investigation.
I'll second that, your worship.
Called question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. There's no public hearings notices. And so right now we have the proclamation, the WayStrong, and October way stronger together. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, where we come together to support and honor those impacted by the disease. Whereas in 1 in 8 Canadian women will be diagnosed in their lifetime. In 2024 approximately 780 Saskatchewan women will be diagnosed with cancer. Many of these women right here in our community. Whereas WayStrong is a new community initiative formed especially specifically to support the women of Weyburn and area. All funds raised through WayStrong will remain in our community. WayStrong is the first annual cancer retreat will benefit the women in our community through a variety of learning and movement opportunities as well as gathering a supportive community of women sharing their experiences. Therefore, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor, City of Weyburn, S.A., do hereby proclaim October 2024 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Tonight, we have representing the delegation, we have Lisa Vink, Crystal Borowski, Peggy Henderson, Deanna Peterson, and Yvette Church here. Would you like to say, Lisa, are you the spokeswoman for this? Okay. Come forward, have a speak, and then we'll, and Crystal, I guess you come up, say a few words, and then we'll have a picture. Turn on the mic there. Just press the button. Yep. There you go. Good.
Just like to thank mayor and council for having us here tonight to have this proclamation. WayStrong just came about earlier this year. I was diagnosed with breast cancer earlier this year. These two, not far behind me. And I found that we needed some support and some opportunities for women in the community that have breast cancer. But WayStrong is not just focusing on breast cancer. We're going to be inclusive of all cancer and women in our community as we're a smaller community. So we want to include everyone in our initiative.
Well, thank you for--
Good. That was perfect.
There's no reports of standing committees. The consent agenda tonight is the building report for September, the fire chief report in September, Public Works report in September, and water treatment plant report in September. Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would make a motion that the following items on the consent agenda be approved. The building report for September, the fire chief report for September, Public Works report for September, and the water treatment plant report for September.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Called question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. And with that, that will be found on our, all these reports will be found on our city website. First motion, accounts payable?
Your worship, I would move that the purchases from September 1st, 2024 to September 30th, 2024 in the amount of $4,207,742.50 be passed for payment. The purchases include quick pays of $88,205.04. Accounts payable $3,568,396.60. Direct withdrawals $545,172.70. And debit card transactions of $5,968.16.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Seeing none, called question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. New business, property sale, 409, 415 Almer Street and 916 First Avenue Northwest. Charlie?
The city previously received an offer to purchase from Derek Schenner for a total of .7 acres at the market price of $12,000 per acre for bare land, which amounted to $8,640 plus GST, which was approved at the September 9th, 2024 council meeting. The applicant was proposing to use the land for attire repair shop and workshop. Mr. Schenner has submitted a new offer to purchase 916 First Avenue, a total of .3 acres, together with lots 409 to 415 Almer Street, a total of .5 acres. The parcel 916 First Avenue is zoned for both mixed use and parks and open space, and lots 409 to 411 Almer Street is zoned for parks and open space while lot 415 is mixed use. Public notices are required to be issued prior to the sale as sections of the parcels are designated for parks purposes in the city official community plan. Public notices will be advertised in the newspaper, at City Hall, and on the City of Weyburn website, in addition to being sent to registered owners within a 75-meter radius of the property. Council approval is required for the sale of this nature as it has not been advertised for sale as well as being designated as a parks and open space. The applicant is proposing to build a 1,600 square foot tire repair and workshop on parcels 409 to 415 Almer Street, and 916 First Avenue will be used for advertising purposes. Both parcels are zoned for mixed use as well as parks and open space. The parcels are located in the flood fringe overlay zone. Therefore, all new construction must be adequately floodproof to a minimum of .5 meters above the 1 to 500-year flood elevation. The lot 409 to 411, the lots 409 to 411 Almer Street is not currently advertised by the City of Weyburn. Council approval is required for the sale of this nature as a portion of the land is designated as municipal reserve. We do have the areas highlighted there. The sale will be contingent upon the following conditions. Successful approval of a discretionary use development permit in the mixed use district. Consolidation and registration of the parcels at the cost of the purchaser. Rezoning of the parcels identified as parks and open space to mixed use at the cost of the purchaser. Amending the land use designation map of the official community plan at the cost of the purchaser. The development of the tire repair and workshop is required within two years of the closing date of the agreement. The land is sold as is where is, meaning any improvements, upgrades to roads, services, utilities, and other infrastructure is to be at the cost of the purchaser. The city's standard sale agreement conditions, that is deposits, closing, land registry costs, et cetera. Off-site development levies will be applicable separate from the purchase price at a rate of $4.51 per square foot, which will be charged at the development permit stage. So we do have two options here. Option 1, approve the sale of block 3 lot 15 to 17, Plan AZ 357, and block 3 lot 24 to 31, Plan AZ 357 to Derek Schenner for the purchase price offered of $9,600 plus applicable GST with the conditions listed above, and that the city clerk be authorized to sign said sale agreement. Or option 2, deny the sale of block 3 lot 14 to 17, Plan AZ 357, and block 3 lot 24 to 31, Plan AZ 357 to Derek Schenner, and direct administration to advise the applicant of the denial. Reasons for denial would have to be provided. Staff recommendations. Option 1, that council approves the sale of block 3 lot 15 to 17, Plan AZ 357, and block 3 lot 24 to 31, Plan AZ 357 to Derek Schenner for the purchase price offered of $9,600 plus applicable GST, subject to the conditions listed above.
Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that council approves the sale of block 3 lot 15 to 17, Plan AZ 357, block 3 lot 24 31, Plan AZ 357 to Derek Schenner for the purchase price offered of $9,600 plus applicable GST, subject to the conditions 1 through 7 as noted. Off-site development levies will be applicable separate from the purchase price at a rate of $4.51 per square foot, which will be charged at the development permit stage.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. Shirley, that's been a lot of work on this project for you. So I just want, just to be clear, since we've seen this the first time to tonight, we're still basically talking about the same area. We've just moved a few parcels around. Is that fair to say?
The last approval that was given by council, council included the lane. So now Mr. Schenner has decided that he no longer wants the lane at this time. So because of that, we had to resubmit to council for approval.
But the change here is somewhat immaterial.
Well, the lots itself have not changed at all. Just the lane.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Called question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Number B of new business, 16th Street Storm Main Replacement Project Investigation. Mr. Higgs?
Thank you, your worship. I'll just give you a little bit of a preamble about my thoughts and why I brought this to council, and then I'll put the motion forward if that's all right.
Sure.
Okay. So on May 13th, an RFP was presented and accepted to council for the 2024 Stormwater Replacement Project. During the discussion, Council Richard expressed particular concerns regarding the difference between the bids, noting that the lower bidder would have to mobilize from Ontario, raising questions about how this could be possibly achieved. We were assured as council that the contractor could rent equipment and that that could be done, which it was. So that's good. Council Richard, Richards also inquired that the contract would be written to protect the city's interests. And again, he was assured that that would be the case, and I'm certain it is. So throughout the project, I personally asked July, August, and again in September if the contractor was meeting the requirements. I was repeatedly assured they were, and it was progressing as planned. Unfortunately, on September 25th, we had to release Full Spire. So given the developments and the changes that happened within it, your worship, I'd like to propose that we do some, a review of the process, just to ensure those types of things don't arise in the future. So I would move that a city administration, along with any interested counselors, participate in a thorough investigation and a postmortem review of the bid process for the 16th Street Stormwater Replacement Project. This postmortem review will begin after the upcoming election, obviously, and will focus on identifying inefficiencies within the current bid process, limiting the city's exposure to similar risks in the future projects, and establishing guidelines or improvements to prevent a recurrence of similar issues. The goal of the review is to safeguard the city's interest, increase transparency, and enhance future projects. I believe this investigation will be valuable learning opportunity for both council, administration, and community members. Your worship, I'd be happy to second that motion.
Discussion. So the question, I guess, of Mr. Higgs is that you want more of this of, not so much of a blame thing, but as I, like in the Coroner's Act, anytime the Coroner's Act does a review on any case where there's somebody who's killed or seriously injured, they're just looking for how to not, not looking for blame, but just looking for how not to have the recurrence?
Absolutely. I think within the project itself, everything was handled to the current procedures within the city, from what I can understand. Everything was handled properly. That's not the issue. It's to ensure that going forward, we make the right, we make the right decisions, maybe tweaking an already good process.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I would reiterate everything you said. I don't think we're looking for anybody to have a finger pointed at them. We just want to make sure that our process is as tight as it can possibly be. Thank you.
Let's pose one question to Councilor Higgs about your wording. Make sure that everyone else's understanding matches my own. When you say interested counselors, but you also say after the next election, that would be interested counselors from the next council, not from this one.
Of course.
All right. Just for clarity.
And so, is, and I guess there's, there's no real start date that you would like onto that?
I didn't impose a start date just because, you know, certainly we're going to have some new counselors and just people to get their feet under. I'd like to see it start, you know, sort of January 1st type thing. But it depends on administration's demands. I mean, that's budget time as well, so.
I guess the last thing is comments from Mr. Warren as to the ability to do such?
Oh, I think this is a great request from council, and it's something that we can look into. You know, we always look at improving our processes and, and always from learnings what happens within, within the process. This is a very tangible thing to do, and I think it's really a great thing to do. You know, we talk strategically of how we can always improve our processes and, and see that. I don't have any concern with that. And, you know, one of the things I see is, is, you know, we have purchase policies currently in place that we can review. We can look at our procurement process with how we do contracts. There's a lot of great things we can do, and I think this is a good process moving forward.
Mr. Van Betje?
You know, it, it was an unfortunate situation, but I do commend the city in that they did follow the processes, but they did get at, you know, at the end, they made the right decisions, and they got things done, or will be done prior to winter. And that's the important part, is that there wasn't nothing that's going to drag on to next year and cause more and more problems. So I think the city made a prompt, proper decision. It was a difficult decision to switch contractors, but I do commend them for making that decision promptly.
Right. Because again, in here, the, this is not like this is a one-off occurrence that never happens to anybody else. We have, there's numerous examples throughout industry where the simply contractors are not meeting their requirements and not being able to fulfill the job, and they simply are terminated and start again. So I want to make sure that that is known. This is not isolated incident only to the city here, and the correct measures were taken. Called question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. So we'll leave that administrator's hands to get things set up after the next election. Which brings us to the final thing, inquiries and announcements. This, there's a, this, I'll just say that this marks kind of the final meeting before our November 13th elections. I wish to thank all the members here within council, all the administration, and all the city workers for all the great job that they did in the last four years. Special thank you to Mr. Van Betje here for his 12 years of service, as he's not seeking reelection. And we've, we as this council, I feel that we've accomplished a lot, and there's much more. There's other tasks at hand, such as our pool that the next council is going to have to look at and deal with, and we'll go from there. For, with that being said, Mr. Coe, if you could bring us up to date on the pool?
Sure. So I guess I'll do a bit of background. Upon the startup of our indoor swimming pool this year, we identified that we were losing roughly 32,000 liters of water a day, which sparked investigation into where the issue was occurring. We went through a number of tests, and the most recent investigation we carried out was our ground penetrating radar, where we brought outside consultants in to take a scan of our entire pool basin, the hot tub and the pool deck as well. We have since received that investigation report mid-week last week, and unfortunately, there were a number of findings in the, in the report that showed significant damage to the pool basin, the hot tub, the pool deck as well. Different anomalies which have popped up on the radar scan, which would indicate different areas of maybe cracking or problems with the concrete, and then also problems with the rebar within the concrete itself, which creates structural issues in those concrete pads themselves, and will not get any better, basically, if we leave it. So following that report, we engaged Stan Tech, who worked with us on our facility assessment reports that we had done in July and August of this year, since they knew our facility very well, to take a look at the scans and to kind of guide us through our next steps. So right now, we're just waiting on their recommendation report basically back to us on the different options that we have for the pool, and then what that looks like. We've asked to see some D-class estimate pricing, so we have somewhat of an idea what we're looking at. And then some potential options for the best solution for, for what we have at that pool, the most cost-effective, however, long-lasting solution. We, this isn't a situation where we can put a Band-Aid on the pool to fix what's going on there. So we will look at a number of different, different avenues to address the issues. Once we receive that report, though, I will be providing something back to council to start working through the process and see what direction they would like us to go in. So that's basically the update that I have as of right now. Beyond that, we are looking at a kind of a long-term closure of the indoor pool, for sure, for the duration of 2024, and I would, I would say that'll extend into 2025 for quite some time until we can address the issues. That being said, we still do have the outdoor pool, and all of our filtration equipment and boilers and everything associated with that pool are in fine condition. So we will just be shifting to operate as a seasonal facility for 2025. And we may look at different things like extending our, our season and stuff like that, depending on the staff resources that we can bring in. One of the unfortunate side effects of this as well was we did have to lay off a number of part-time employees and reclass our full-time employees to different locations within our operations. But I want to applaud my managers of the leisure services department, and the staff have been kind of caught in the crossfire of this and have been adapting really well along the way. And yeah, so that's basically my update on the pool right now. Does anybody have any questions for me? There areas that you'd like me to address that?
Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, tough. I appreciate the predicament you're in, Andrew. Just to be clear, I just, because there's been some conversations I've been involved in where folks have wondered why this wasn't brought to light, maybe while the pool was empty during the summer. So, and I'm assuming the answer is because you wouldn't have known about the problem until you started to put water into it. And this isn't something that just happened this year. This has been the long degradation of something that is now very, very prominent.
Yeah, absolutely. So the reason why we didn't know that we had the issue is because we didn't have an issue when we closed down last season. The concrete is hidden underneath tiles, so you, you see no visual impacts of what's going on. We did have a facility assessment completed, which stated that in the near future, we should look at investigating the state of the basin because it's getting to be that time, I guess. Typically, they say you have about 45 to 50 years of life cycle on a pool basin, and we're at about year 35. So it is early as well for this to be occurring. So it was on our radar as something that we should begin investigating to, to see what kind of condition we're dealing with. However, we didn't expect this to be an issue already. So really unfortunate. Really, there was nothing for our staff that they could have done to identify the problem. The only real way that we were able to identify the problem was to bring in the ground penetrating radar. And that's not something that we would just do on a preventative maintenance basis. It is quite expensive and time-consuming, and there's a lot to it. So very unfortunate, something that we did not see coming, and we thought we had a few years until we would have to worry about any of this happening. So.
Thank you, your worship. Andrew, I had a couple people ask me if they've had superpasses or passes to the leisure center. Where can they direct their questions, and where do they go from here?
Yeah. So if there's anybody with memberships, we are offering different options, either extending memberships, providing refunds, exchanging them to be recognized at the other building if they had a swimming membership. We will recognize them at the Spark Center. If they have any questions, they can either just contact the Spark Center, or they can reach out to us through our leisureservices@weyburn.ca email, and then we'll help them out.
Mr. Richards, do you have something more to say?
Yeah, one more, your worship. Thank you very much. Just a quick note. As we go into the fall, this time of year is always when we start to populate our youth council. So we have got that largely underway. We have one vacant youth council seat. Council Van Betje, I'm sorry, you don't qualify for that one. So anyways, anybody that has a young person in their life or a young person that might be interested in, in doing that, the application form is on the city website slash youth-dash-council, or come into City Hall. Our communications coordinator, Kyle, can help you through that. If Kyle's not here, city clerk Tina will get you whatever you need. So we'd like to get that last seat filled as soon as possible. So if somebody wants to step up, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Van Betje?
Thank you, your worship. As I am not seeking reelection, this will be my last council meeting. So I have a few words. To begin with, I would like to thank the two mayors and councils that I have served with for support and team they have provided me to work with and within. Also, I would like to thank the city administration that we as a council work so closely with throughout the years. I've always been met with respect and offered information and answers, no matter how obvious or difficult the questions were. They are truly professionals. A special thanks to city manager Warren, who I feel is one of, has one of the toughest jobs in the city. He is passionate about our city and a professional in every definition of the word. Above all, I thank the citizens of Weyburn who have supported me the past 12 years. Whether or not we were in agreement with an issue, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve. to serve the people at Weyburn. To all candidates who have put their names forward for city, rural, provincial election positions, good luck and thank you for your interest. It is not an easy decision to put yourself in the public eye and run for an elect, an official position, and if elected, to commit your time and energies to electorate. I ask that we all get out and use our democratic right to vote. Above all, though, I ask that we treat these men and women who have put their names forward, and those that serve us in civil services, with respect and dignity. They're all trying to make our lives and communities better. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve you as Weyburn City Council for the past 12 years, it has been a true honor.
Any other comments? Mr. Janki?
Yeah, I want to echo what Counselor Van Betje said about encouraging everyone to get out and do their civic duty and cast your vote regardless of who you plan to vote for. Please don't forget to vote for school board, that's just as important, and as the mayor likes to point out, more of your taxes go there than here. And special thanks to our city clerk Tina Clay, who is acting as returning officer. I don't think a lot of people understand quite how much work goes into organizing an election, but it's incredible that they get it done and get it done so quickly, so thank you so much for your efforts.
Do you, Tina, do you, are you fully staffed for the election?
Yeah, we're very full with staff for the election.
Okay.
And I was, I was also gonna say, there's no school board election, they all got in by acclamation this year.
Thank you for that, I really should have looked that up before I said so.
The, just the final, one of the final things I'll comment, dates, dates and places. So November 13th, opening is opening at the Spark Center, that opens at, what, 8:00 AM?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM till?
8:00 PM.
8:00 PM.
Yeah.
And then the pre-elections?
Yeah, so we have advanced polls at the Spark Center as well, on November 7th from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, and on November 9th from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. And we're also doing special polls at the General Hospital, we'll have one from 1:00 to 3:00, and we're doing special mail-in polls at Tadaguwa View and at the Weyburn Special Care Home.
And then again, the 7th is 5:00 to 9:00?
Yeah, and the 9th is 1:00 to 5:00.
1:00 to 5:00. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? And with that, we will close down this council and say thank you again to all the council members, all the staff, and the city workers that have supported us through the years. Thank you, meeting adjourned.